I have to have that in my bag.
Oh, no. It's more difficult than I would say. I will entertain a motion to allow our electronic guest to participate.
Someone.
Second. Please. Hi.
Hi.
I don't know. Anyone sign up for public comments? Where can this be invited to the back room? And it's all.
Nobody signed yet.
Nobody signed yet, let's see, okay.
Yes.
Hold on, or am I something for it? All right. And everybody should have the meeting minutes from November 19th, 2020. You know, for any questions, you just track them. There are no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve of it. I'll make it all.
Second.
Any questions for comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Hi. Mr. Poe?
Hi.
Mr. Jackie?
Hi.
Mr. Reed?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
What's your question for you?
Fantastic. Mr. Hedges is here tonight celebrating just one day and one year anniversary. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming up with us.
It's been a pleasure.
Thanks for staying on board.
The board is all yours for your report.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing we have is a motion to renew and bind the village insurance package for calendar year 2021. That cost $176,937. And I will defer to Lori Lyons after one moment. I'll just remind the board, we reported to you about six weeks ago that we were not going to offer bid this year. So this is a real look at current rates. So Lori, please go ahead.
Um, my comments are really related completely to the agenda supplement this evening. Our broker has told us that most communities are seeing an increase of approximately 6% to 15%. And our renewals came in at 6.8%. I feel with the exposure increases, both in the areas of property and equipment and wages, that our renewal is really super, super favorable. So it's my recommendation that you authorize staff to bind the coverage and renew all of our policies.
Any questions for comments?
Hey Lori, do you connect with other municipalities to see what their percentage increase is for insurances? Or how our coverage change rates compared to other municipalities, other than just taking the insurer's word for it?
Um, I have not done that in the past, but I certainly can do that and report back.
I was just wondering, because I know the insurance is saying this is what they're seeing as an increase, but I didn't know if local municipalities are also seeing a percentage increase like this.
Well, of course, workers' comp, at least in our case, when we're with Illinois Public Risk Fund, is related to our rating based on our claims. So that's going to be different in many communities. But I certainly can check on the, on the package part of our insurance coverage.
I don't think it needs to be for, for this one. I'm maybe just going forward.
Okay, sure.
Just a question that I had, it wasn't like a call to action.
Okay.
I'd like to add to that, if I can, sort of in line with what Aaron said. And I think, Aaron, this might be a finance, partly a finance thing too, from a budgetary perspective. I think looking at what we spend and how we spend on a lot of things relative to other municipalities. I would imagine it's, it'll all come out, but I just think it's a reasonable exercise to network with other towns, just to get a sense of what they're doing from a cost standpoint, just to see, you know, just to make sure we're making, you know, what that broker is telling us is true, which is probably true. I would imagine it is, but it is nice to have a check on that, just to see what other people are seeing. And again, maybe not for this particular instance, but I think from a sort of global view, we should be sort of analyzing what our spend is compared to other towns. I just think it's a, it's a healthy thing to do.
I don't know that dollars is really going to give you the answer that you're looking for, Ryan. In the sense that, you know, like, we have a really very expensive wastewater treatment plant and those types of things. So, I mean, but we can look at that analytically.
Yeah, I just think it's useful, globally, just to look at things. And I agree, I mean, there's different circumstances, different, you know, we have different sized wastewater treatment, different size, you know, police forces, different size, you know, all the major sort of big ticket items in our budget. But it'd just be nice, I think, to see, you know, I started building that, and we could maybe talk about it in finance. But I did build a spreadsheet that did compare our spending relative to other towns. I think Christine had gotten that for me. But I just think in general, it's just useful, and I just want to bring that up to the board. It's, it's a useful thing to do, to do that. So just echo what Aaron was saying.
Very good.
Any further questions for comments? I will entertain a motion to authorize the staff to follow up with the renewal against coverage with our municipality's health care to various insurance companies that they work with.
Second, second.
Is that the second, second?
Second, second.
Any further questions for comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Mr. Reed?
Hi.
Mr. Jackie?
Hi.
Mr. Poe?
Hi.
Mr. Klein, hi. Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, request a motion to approve the first payment of $48,172,37 cents to Stark and Stone's Trenching, Inc. for work on the Highland Avenue stormwater project. That's, you can see here on the agenda that the total contract is $83,935. The project is completed, we've done a wonderful job. The bond is restored. They have submitted all of their waivers as required under the contract. So we would ask for this first payment. They will submit their paperwork for the second payment shortly. And then there will be a five to seven weeks. If you have any further questions, Mr. Paulson, sound right.
I do have, I do have a question.
Sure.
Why did Stark, was Stark required to submit Department of Labor certified payroll when they've been working in the village for many years?
This is a public bid project, and that's prevailing, it requires prevailing wage. So by law, that's required.
But doesn't all of our patching and water main stuff also fall under prevailing wage? Since the village passed the prevailing wage ordinance?
Chairman, would you like to go, Seth?
Well, I could just say, you know, on the, the standard contract documents that we include in the big bid packages does require some smittle of their documentation on their, for their labor as part of the payment application package.
I guess a follow-up I have with trustee Cope, not to him, but in line with what he asked is, if we're requiring them to submit this type of thing for this job, should we be requiring this document for all jobs done by an outside firm, which falls under the prevailing wage ordinance?
And usually, in most contractors, especially a company like Stark who performs for the village, don't, aren't they required to do it once per year? And not per project?
That's something I'll have to look into, that's the first time I've actually been asked. I would say that, I know the reason it was required this time is because it was part of the public bid package. We had a public bid opening here at the Village House, and that was required in this case. And I'll look into whether or not it should be required on the other contracts as well. This is the first one we've sent through a public bid process this year. But I will look into that, it's a good question, thank you.
Any further questions for comments? All right, we have approved test number one, Stark and Stone, $48,172,37 cents.
I make that motion.
Any questions for comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jackie?
Ryan?
Mr. Jackie? Hi.
Ryan's frozen right now.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Klein, hi. Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Mr. Kerjacky's unfrozen now.
Yeah, I'm back. I stood closer to the heater. I am an I.
Mr. Mayor, I got Josh tonight to put together a preview of our new building department software. And so he's responsible for that. Yeah, so once an applicant signs up via the world village website, they have a lot of information to start this. So once they sign in, their dashboard is customized, well, to see if an applicant is getting it.
Hey, hey, hold, hold on, I'm really sorry. It's, I can't understand anything you guys are saying. Whoever was just talking, it was coming through completely muffled. It might just be my speakers, I don't know.
No.
Hold on, we're going to turn the laptop face their direction.
It's not, it's not just your speakers, it's my, it's coming from there.
Yeah, I'm having the same problems.
Okay, try now, Josh.
Will anybody hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, I know the background. So I've shared my screen, and everybody in there can see, this is your dashboard on Community 4, which is SafeBuild's fairly newly purchased website that they can contract permits. So this is the Hampshire page, and this is what it looks like from our end. A contractor will be able to log in, they would have a dashboard that they can customize and see all of their permits. If a homeowner has multiple permits throughout the year, they will also be able to track all of those from the same dashboard. So just for example, we have a permits over here in our, and this is the type that they would see. So these are all the permits that have been entered in SafeBuild since we launched. And you can report rather. And then I'll just go into one or two of these to show you the types of tools and things that can be done. So just a fence, for example. Same fence permit. So now all this information on the left-hand toolbar side is related to this specific permit. In front of you, you see the permits workflow, starts with the building plan review. A fence permit is fairly simple, so then it goes through permit issuance. And then once it's paid for, it's issued, and inspections are now pending. In the documents section, we've got all kinds of different things, the plans, the permit itself, any kind of plan reviews. Here, I'll go into different permits, so that you can see a more complex one, such as a new home. So a new home has a few more steps, final approvals, occupancy. Go back into the documents, and you can see they have, they have different things uploaded. Houses are obviously more complex than fences. And if you have any questions, feel free to stop me while I'm speaking and ask what something specific is. I'll show you an example, this is a fee calculation that's done for a new home. Lots of different types of fees, transition fees, impact fees, and all of that gets calculated by SafeBuild now. And can be paid online. So this is back to the original permit page, we can search for permits, we can filter permits. We have many, many different reports that we can run, which is what I'm starting to get into now. Here's all the different reporting tools that we have. So all types of things. And, and that's, that's obviously pretty much it. It's a very, very simple tool to use, it's very intuitive. Got really good feedback from the builders that are working in prayer coverage right now. And the homeowners seem to be learning how to use it as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions from the board about that? Oh, it's great. We, we found SafeBuild really great to work with, and really appreciate their commitment. And you can tell they've been very busy. So the next thing on the agenda is, I just have some updates for you on COVID-19. At the last board meeting, we talked about doing some testing in the, in the, in the village, trying to hire a private company to test in the village. You have, I distributed tonight, and I emailed to those of you at home. Not really an agenda supplement, but a memorandum that's available here for the public also. So it's, I wanted to bring you up to date on some very current things that just occurred since Tuesday when the pack went out. We will be having a test site at Hampshire High School on Tuesday, excuse me, on Wednesday, the ninth. And, I'm sorry, it is Tuesday the eighth, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And it will be for the PCR test, which is the gold standard test. And it will be a free test. When I reported to you two weeks ago, we've been looking into a private company, and I still, still have a, I'm still working with two different private companies in your, in the same packet as a proposal toward the end from another company that I received just today. So if there is further testing required or necessary after next week, we do still have some options for private testing. But it was very helpful this week, that we were just fortunate that, that while we were originally told that it would be January or February before we could have a test here, there was apparently a cancellation. And I received a call from the King County Health Department, and they've been very helpful, along with D-300, their security officer, who's also been extremely helpful. So that will happen on next week. Very, very little required by the village, the company that does this, does it statewide for the state. And so it's pretty much automatic. And so the only thing we're doing is providing our officer on duty at the high school will be available. They have their own signage and traffic control, and everything should be pretty simple. Are there any questions about the testing? Okay, if not, then I would like to bring you up to date on vaccines. News announced today, the governor's office had a conference call this afternoon. And Dr. Azizi, excuse me, Dr. Zeki, she reported that Illinois has been notified now by the CDC, the FDA, that we will start receiving vaccines as early as the week of September 14th. And you can see before you in those three bullet points, the number of quantity of vaccines that are expected per week through the end of the year. She described it as roughly 800,000, you can see it's slightly less than that in total from the schedule. You can also see the priorities that will be given. The first vaccine will be administered to facility personnel, all facility personnel who come in contact with patients at both nursing homes and hospitals. I think it's also important to note that, I'm not sure which 50 counties they are, but the counties, the 50 counties with the highest death rate for capita will receive the vaccines first. So it seems like the state government is now connected very well with the federal government. And we've been hearing quite some time about the federal government's plans for vaccine. The first time we really heard anything from the state government about them connecting with the federal government and what we should expect. So there was a conference call, there was about 300 local government officials, both municipal and county government. And we were allowed to ask questions today for the first time. And I did ask a question, and that was to verify whether water and super treatment plant personnel were considered essential employees, and the answer was yes. And also, there was some lack of clarity whether or not police officers were considered first responders in some of the county documentation. And I also asked that question, and the answer was yes. So I think there's still formula, there's a very long policy, vaccine policy that's on the website, that was clearly prepared, I would say, several months ago. But this is very updated information that we see today. So I think that's really exciting. Direct role to play right now, but we're standing by and made ourselves available to the county if there's any help. Some of the other quote updates that I have are, Josh and I did go to all the businesses in town in the last two days and distributed the posters, the No Mask Social Distancing Service posters, and everybody was very cooperative. You see them, they're pretty bright, you can see from the streets. A lot of them are in the windows now, and I see all of our businesses, and they're very appreciative. And we just told them that we were there on behalf of the village board to support them in any way we could. So that, and we continue to, we started another round of distributing hand sanitizer to the businesses and our streets apart. With that, I'll open any questions and any other discussion that you'd like to have about this topic. Questions for comments?
Jay, did they say which vaccine that we were going to be getting? Do you know?
Yes, it's the PCR test. No vaccine, oh, I'm sorry.
Vaccine.
Initially, it's the Pfizer vaccine. And then she did mention, and these are, these numbers are all Pfizer vaccines. And one, one other point that is in the memo that I wanted to mention is that this was the first time that I had heard that the vaccines have to be separated by three weeks, the first and second vaccine. I'm sure you're all aware that it's a two-vaccine process. And she also mentioned, I believe it was 94 degrees below centigrade, our students below Fahrenheit, where it has to be stored. One other thing that we learned is that that, that's only available, once you get to the site, most storage places don't have that type of refrigeration. So it can be stored at regular refrigerator temperature for five days. So once the vaccines are delivered, they have to be administered within five days, and they will be. And the other thing I thought was interesting is that they're being shipped directly from the warehouse facilities from manufacturer, directly to the local facilities, and not going through any other, any other stops in between. They're being delivered primarily by FedEx, UPS, Amazon, and USPS. So she did mention the second company, forgetting the name now, that they expect approval very soon. With that, we could conceivably see some vaccine, additional vaccines before the end of the year. Is it Moderna? Moderna, right?
Moderna.
Right, but those would be on top of this. The other, there was a question about tracking whether people got the second vaccine and whether there was any efficacy with just one vaccine. And she, I think she found that kind of an interesting question, because she, she talked for a few minutes about it. She said, "We don't really know. We know that the Pfizer vaccine is, I believe, 94% efficacy, and Moderna is 94." And she said there's probably undoubtedly some impact from the first vaccine. That was not part of the published study. But she was going to look into that for us. But they will be tracking that, and then the providers will be tracking down the people if they don't come for the second vaccine. And there's a national database. Every location that will be administering vaccines must be part of this state database. They have to register and be part of that, and the data is real-time uploaded to the state and in real-time uploaded to the federal government. I actually heard Dr. Burke say yesterday that simultaneously with the shot being administered, they're seeing that result in PC. So it sounds to me like the vaccine, the logistics of the vaccine are really growing up really well locally now.
One of the other things I wanted to mention in this is really for Mike Reed, or trustee Reed and his committee from a PR standpoint, the vaccines from, I think it's Moderna and Pfizer are a relatively new tech, newer technology. In science terms, it's newer, but they've been testing it for decades. But I think maybe some messaging along that, because there's definitely a lot of misinformation about mRNA and what it is, messenger RNA, and the difference between traditional vaccines. I think it'd be important, if those are the vaccines that we're getting, that we do some education about what that is, you know, and, and that it's not anything to be afraid of. Because I think that one of the big challenges that we're going to have going forward for our citizens is trying to get them comfortable with it. So just a note, because there is definitely a lot of misinformation. I've seen it myself, come through some of the things that I look at, and I've done quite a bit of reading on it. But I just think it's something that we, we should get out ahead of if we're going to, if getting this amount of vaccine and access to our people, for our people, that they know at least something about it. You know, and hopefully we can help prevent them from being subjected to some of the misinformation that's going on.
Trust. Coming off of your point there, Ryan, I think that information should come from, we should just be the messenger and passing it along from science, not the message comes from the village. Because we don't want to politicize this.
No, exactly.
Trustee Robinson, if I could just add to your point, I failed to mention that. One thing that they did announce today, and they're calling it the Vaccine Ambassador Program. Trustee KerJacky, you'll recognize that term. And they're going to ask for community, actually, people in the community by neighborhood. It almost sounded like a neighborhood watch. But they're going to have an educational program on the importance of vaccine, the effectiveness of vaccine, and the safety of the vaccine. And they will provide the curriculum, and we all asked how soon we expect to get that. And the Metro West Council of Government is going to be a representative and connect with the governor's office on that. But we will be receiving actual curriculum on how we can educate our local public about the importance of the safety of the vaccine. That's a very good point.
Thank you, great.
I do have one question about the PCR testing. Jay, had, did the county, when you were talking to them about the site, I know the hours are nine to four. Did they go through logistics as far as the number of tests? Like, is there a, is there a possibility people will be in line before four, but not have been tested and be turned away? Do we know? Is it like, if you're in line by four, then you're getting the test? Just so we can do clear expectation setting with the community? Because I know some of these lines can get very long.
We did, I actually asked that question, and the response I got was that they were more concerned about not having enough people at the test site because of such short notice, and because it's on a weekday. And they have three tests like this, I believe, in Carperlyville, a few weekends ago, on Saturday and Sunday. And they tested about 400 people per day. And they don't believe it will happen any year because of the short notice. But the answer was yes, that they would, they would continue to test until people.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Is there, on the flip side of that, is there like a maximum number that can go and get tested?
They told me that they can test roughly 40 people per hour. So, and I believe that per station, and I believe we're going to have three lanes. So I don't, it doesn't seem like there's a concern about. And as you see in the press release, there's also a similar test the day after in Eldon. So people in the area, I think, will have only test these people those two days. Any further questions for comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you, Mayor. Field detail, committee report. Ryan? You did.
Uh, no, no report.
Thanks for that. Mr. Kelly?
Sorry, I couldn't hear, what was that question?
Non-hospital services committee report.
Nothing to report.
Public work.
Uh, this public works report is in your packet.
Report. Any questions on the report? All right.
I'm, I'm struggling here, and did, did you ask for me?
I have right now, BBC.
All right, I see, I try to be ready. Um, so we've got our meeting next, on the ninth at 6:30. We're going to be taking up a topic that had come up, I think, in the last meeting. And again, subsequently, at the PR meeting on, I think it was a week ago Monday. We're going to be just talking about ways in which we can work to help the local businesses during the COVID time. I know there was some, you know, some suggestions that came out of PR committee. So we're going to focus on things that we can help now that we're going, you know, sort of back into a tough time in terms of cases and things of that nature, just trying to brainstorm ways in which we can make recommendations that'll help local businesses.
Thank you, Chair. My thing I said was a couple. My question is a couple of simple items.
Sure. You all have the accounts table in your jacket, that's where you start with the reimbursements. When you're looking to reimburse $181.04, send before December 9th, 2020. Any questions?
I have a question. I have a question on page one.
That's a big one. Reimbursements to net loss in our claim.
No, just, no, I'm the big one.
Hold on, the other staff. I want to take a motion to a cost payable in the value of $181.04.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? We'll call it, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi. Sorry, it's really hard to hear you guys. We're trying.
Mr. Pope?
Hi.
Mr. Big Jack?
Hi.
Mr. Lee?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Then you have the big regular accounts table, $205,216.80, paid on report number 9th, 2020. So we page one, what's your question?
B and T leasing, storage fees.
That is for the street garage equipment that is stored at the facility on Mill Avenue.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have two. First one is on page one. August plan reviews for BNF construction. It has a due date of October 14th. We're in December approving it. Is there a reason why we were almost two months behind in getting that in? Did we just get the bill from them with the transition?
The bill has been here. It had to be adjusted. They had some administrative hours included on the invoice that we disputed. And so it's been adjusted accordingly.
Gotcha. Okay. And then page five, Liftoff. What is the cloud service we get from Liftoff?
That's the provider for our email services, which are reseller for Microsoft Office 365, and that was the renewal for this year.
I'm sorry, that was the renewal for what?
That was the renewal for this year for Microsoft Office 365.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So that's, yeah, I was going to ask a question on that too, Aaron. So that's just a once a year thing, Mike?
Yeah, it's once a year. They bill us for 12 months of service at one time, and we really don't get any breaks on it, as Lori and I found out. The price went up substantially this year because they readjusted the price of their pricing for all government entities. Perfect timing, this year.
Anything else?
I want to take a motion to approve the second account payable in the value of $205,216.80.
So moved.
Third, fifth, seventh. We got this period. Any questions or comments? We'll call it, please.
Mr. Pope?
Hi.
Mr. Big Jack?
Hi.
Mr. Lee?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Do you start yet?
No, I'm trying.
Okay, okay.
It's coming.
Public Relations. I would just like to apologize for the audio issues you guys are all experiencing. It's technical difficulties at the hall. I happen to have this laptop in my truck. And so we made it work, and that's why the audio is so terrible. So I'm sorry. That's it. That's all I got.
Don't we have IT, like, service on call to fix the TV part or whatever, our technical issue? I thought we, like, contracted a company to be our IT vendor.
Not 30 minutes before a meeting we got. There's no way they'd make it out in time. They have a two-hour response time, and we discovered this issue 30 minutes before the meeting. Trustee Kelly, I'll take responsibility for that. It's been working just fine this time. It's been like this. It seems like software problems. So I'll be on, I'll be on with support from the manufacturer, my local vendor. Planning is loaded.
Yeah, I have two items. One, Plan Commission will be meeting on December 14th, 2020. They will be considering a recommendation regarding the petition of the Briar Hill Ventures for special use to operate a recycling center on the Briar Hill Road property, the one that was south of Allen Road, North 72. I'm sure you remember the gentleman's presentation. And then ZBA will be meeting on December 22nd for the same issue. And they will also be holding a public hearing, well, it'll be a public hearing for that issue. There will also be a public hearing regarding the Hampshire Township Park District's petition for the variance for their gravel parking lot at Tuscany Park.
Thank you, Chair. Public Safety.
I have nothing.
Police Department report. Chief got anything?
No, it seems that it's slowed down a little bit from the weather. And COVID obviously heating up, it's kind of keeping people excited a little more than the previous month. So it's pretty typical. We're still dealing with, I'd say, quite a bit of mental health issues in the community. There are some things we are dealing with, but overall, probably solid.
All right. Any other announcements or new business before we adjourn?
I do have one question. On the thing I received from our village manager, we're to fill out a survey, and we're supposed to sign it, fill it out, and send it back to him. I want to talk about that. I feel quite, quite, it's quite odd. I've never experienced filling out a survey on someone and then sending it to that person. I have questions. Has all village staff and village managers, are they going to be surveyed so that we can see these? Because we don't work with our village manager daily, or at least I don't. So I'd like to hear some input from all the village staff, including the village managers. I just don't feel comfortable filling out a survey on someone and then sending it to him or her.
I did talk to Mr. Hedges about that today. I have a slight concern that people will be uncomfortable signing it if there's negative comments, positive comments, and different comments, that we should probably just send it to this line, to Chief Kelly though. And obviously, Mr. Hedges would see it in the report. Not necessarily the names that are attached to individual comments.
I mean, he's done a phenomenal job, and I'd like to retain him, and I'd like to give him a raise. But I just don't feel that, you know, this should go to the full board for consideration and discussion. And then pending that decision, go to finance for the increase. I don't think it should go to finance for them to handle this. This is either public relations or something other than finance.
President Magnuson, I would agree with you. I know when we did Executive Director Schrod's reviews as a part of the park board, which is the only other time I've been in this similar type of situation, all of the responses were sent to one of the trustees. They brought everything together, created an anonymous but comprehensive report with everybody's feedback, but names removed, and then the average scores for the various ratings. So I would agree with you on having it be that procedure. To Trustee Koch, I think going to the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee was put in charge of the employee. Got manual as well. It seems as though HR things have gone under the Finance Committee. I don't know what other committee would oversee HR-type requirements. I don't think that would be PR, right? That's more out, external communication. But internal HR functions, I don't, the history to me is that's always been under finance.
I don't, I don't feel that it should go to any committee. I think it should go to the full board and have a discussion about it. The full board is the one that brought all the questions and sat through everything for the initial hire. And I think it should not be a committee. I think it should be the full board after we get the reviews from staff, all staff, all city managers of different departments, and then we can have a discussion. That's just my opinion. I've gone through these for years after years after years. And I just don't think a committee should be making a recommendation. I think it should go for a full discussion to the full board. That's why I originally got elected to this position, to quit doing the stuff that we're going to do right now. This is what the old board did.
Which what? We're asking for input in a logical, I mean, personnel, years ago, used to be on the finance. We got rid of the personnel committee when we first hired a administrator, because that was their job, was to administer to the personnel. I think what we're looking at is for everybody to send their comments in. And maybe we change, if we want to do a committee at all, we can do a committee. Or Miss Plon can invite all of the trustees that finance Peter, and everybody can be there. I don't have any problem with that. I don't think anybody should. It's an open process. We could do that.
I'm good with that.
Everybody puts, takes their input in so we can answer all this, quite a few pages of questions. So to tally those up, wouldn't be able to be done, I don't believe, sitting here on the fly. The idea was to get them all collected, go into the executive session, ask the finance committee, and talk about it.
Well, I hope the board has looked at the questionnaire, because most of the questions on there, we can't answer unless the, some of the board works with our city manager on a daily basis. I can't answer a lot of those questions because I'm not down at City Hall bugging them. That's why I think it would be beneficial for us to have staff and city and the managers of different departments fill this out as well for us to see. They work with him daily.
I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Pope on that. I mean, and this isn't against Mr. Hedges, because you all are familiar with the process.
I mean, he's done a great, he's done a great job. I want to keep him. I want to give him a raise. But I want to complete the process 100%, not just a portion.
I also have concerns with Mr. Hedges being involved in the review process for himself.
I don't, I don't think it's a concern necessarily for Mr. Hedges, but we're setting a precedent here for the next village manager and the next one down the road. Do we really want that to be the process? I mean, what if we get, I mean, yes, we're all in agreement. Jay's done a wonderful job. But what if we get one that hasn't done a wonderful job? Do we really want them in that position to be able to handle this evaluation process themselves?
And that's why I want to get staff. I mean, is the staff comfortable with them? Is the staff happy with them? Are the department heads getting beat up, getting pushed around, getting bullied? We don't know any of that. I don't know any of that.
First of all, I appreciate all your comments and the confidence. Thank you. This was a process and a form that was recommended by the International City Management Association. So that's why I provided the paper. My intention was just to collect the data and save trusty clients from having to do the work, the math. But I certainly understand your preference to be confidential in the remarks. Regarding staff comments, Trustee Pope, there is a review process called 360 Review. And that would be where my, a similar review would be done by staff and myself. And I'd be happy to conduct that as a separate process if you'd like to do that. I think that some of...
How about some of the other staff, Ryan? You got any comments? Any other trustees got anything?
I was, I was just going to say, I'm okay with a separate process, but I think that that needs to be completed at a similar timeline as we are doing ours. Because it would be, I don't know, it wouldn't be fruitful to have them conduct one and then have us conduct one, and only Pope on our stuff. So if we are going to involve staff, I think that's a great idea. However, again, no offense to you, I don't think that that needs to be coming to me. I mean, somebody, whether it be a board member, some other staff member, somebody that we assign to do this, because the look of saying, hey, I got some questions to ask you. How do you feel about me? As an example, I don't think that they're going to give you a truthful answer regardless of how they feel. I just, I don't, I don't like that look.
Well, I have no problem telling the results. So if you guys are okay with 360?
That would be for staff, where I would have them.
Can you send that up? Can you send that to me, and I send that out to staff so that they could become a committee?
That would be someone who would certainly do that, yes.
Can I, I'd just like to add, I understand where Trustee Koch is coming from. And I think we should institute some type of program, like Jay was talking about, where we ask every, so every person or staff member within the village that has direct reports, that their reports do like a leadership evaluation throughout the year. Maybe it's once a year, maybe it's twice a year, and then we take those reports into consideration. I don't think that we should ask direct reports for an evaluation on our determination of somebody's, as part of their review process at the same time. I think if we're going to ask for direct reports to evaluate their leadership, it should be more of a structured program. I can't think of any place I've worked where, when I've had staff, that my manager's gone to my staff to get feedback as a part of my review cycle, if it wasn't a part of a normal survey or leadership review that happens throughout the year anyway, and that that score is taken into consideration, right? It's, it seems odd to ask somebody's direct reports to be a part of their annual review when they, when we haven't asked them before then this, right? It wasn't a structured program. Just my two cents. I think we should get their feedback. I just don't think it should be directly because of this.
I didn't even think about that, because I work, I talk to you all the time, so I didn't even think about it.
And as I think Trustee Kelly makes a good point, a 360 review, which I'm sure you're familiar with that process, Trustee Kelly, that's more of a management development project. It's not really a performance evaluation. It's more understanding how your peers feel about you, how your supporters feel about you. Some people, it takes some time, a lot of time. It'd be very different to misevaluate this stuff. But it is something that I think would be useful and helpful. Do you feel that that would be something that you could develop a timeline for and say that I can have something together by three months, six months, and execute it? Yes, I think we could do that. I think we have to keep in mind, we don't, we don't have an HR department here. Lori does invest with that, and we all know that we're busy as well. That's something that I would develop myself, maybe this and helping Josh. But we can look into that, or we could bring in an outside person to help us do that. Or there's certain companies that do. But again, I would like to repeat, even for our own, the direct reports, too, the other direct reports that I have, that would be a management development process, but not necessarily a performance evaluation, which would be separate to this stuff. And so that would be something that I'd like to do with my own staff, develop and purpose. All right, before we come, the date of the one.
So the survey, you want them just to come to me? Okay. So when you get the survey, send it back to me.
And I have to factor in a... And I have to factor in if some of the questions that, like trustee Coth was saying, are not applicable to sort of quote, we have to figure out how to do that. I could suggest this. So you could just leave that particular answers blank and divide by that one number less. And that would be the same. Okay. So if you're uncomfortable with a particular score, trustee Coth, just leave, just put an A in the box or leave it blank. And that would be, and that would be considered-
Jay, Jay, I think the board knows me and you know me. If I put down anything, it doesn't bother me. But a lot of the questions I read, a lot of the questions I read, I can't give you an answer because I'm not in there every day. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna put down, not applicable.
That is fair. And if you, if you feel in general that it's a, it's a performance evaluation, not, not a survey. But if you feel that the evaluation is not appropriate, if you'd like me to look at some other tools, I'd be happy to do that. There are other tools out there.
I just had an issue with, if I got a problem with you, I'm gonna come and talk to you and look you right in the eye and tell you. But I have a problem sending a survey or, or a, a review to the person that we're reviewing. That's my problem.
That may be, that may be my-
When I saw that, was people not comfortable doing that? That may be my, my private sector.
This is private sector coming out a little bit.
Probably.
Yeah.
So then I make the finance committee meeting a working session?
A working session, absolutely.
Okay.
And we will be going into executive for that?
No.
You might want to consult with Attorney Schuster on that question.
Donner Flur? Your headphone on?
Oh, you're muted.
Good, I'm here. Good evening. You, if, if the entire board is going to be invited to a committee meeting, then it will have to be posted also as a board meeting. You can call it a committee of the whole or something. But in order to comply with the open meetings act, you'll need to post both.
An executive session is allowable, obviously for the committee of the whole, or the working session.
I'm gonna have to, I, I'm not sure about that. There, there is a, a limitation on executive session when compensation is, is the issue. So I'm not, I'm not clear yet from your discussion tonight if that's the end result of that meeting or if this is a evaluation and performance review meeting without discussion of compensation.
Mr. Schuster, for any HR, human resource, or confidential employee meetings, we could, or we should be in executive session due to confidentiality of those. Like somebody's HR record is not public information.
There, there's an exception now built in, something called the work, workers, no.
Transparency.
It's the, it's the Compensation Transparency Act. I can't, I'm having trouble. The whole title is many words long. And, and when that is the issue specifically, then executive session is not allowed. I, I took a look at that last week when I first heard this was coming up. But I, I'm not sure now with this different angle you're taking tonight, how that all blends in.
So if we were to call, Mr. Schuster, if we were to just call a special board meeting, would we, would we be allowed to go in executive because it's just a board meeting and not a committee meeting?
No, it's not a function of what type of meeting. It's a function of what's the discussion. And when, when a compensation increase of an IMRF participating employee is one of the, or is the issue, then if it could result in a more than six percent increase in pay, then you may not use an executive session for that discussion. There's conditions like that that apply.
Right, but if the executive session was limited to the HR review or performance review, regardless of the compensation outcome because of that review, then we come out of executive session to talk about compensation. Should it be higher than six percent, then we'd be fine, correct?
I think so. That might be a roadmap that will work.
So trustee Reed, that you, you could also decide this to be a July seventeenth. I don't expect to have a long board meeting that night at this point. So I don't think we have to have a special committee meeting.
Well, I don't want to take it away from finance. That's not the end game here. It's, it's just, it's just a matter, we, we want to, we want to do it the right way. And so I, I think, I think based on what the conversation is, if we just handle the review part of it, right? Like, let's say that it's great, right? And then we say, okay, we're gonna go out and do that executive. Then it goes to finance or whatever, and then talk about compensation. Which is what trustee Coth was saying to begin with, I think. Which is, let's, let's all talk about the review as a group and then hand it to finance and decide what we're gonna do with the money. Right, so or-
So why don't we just talk about it on the seventeenth? I'll tally the results and find, and then go into executive session on the seventeenth, just to talk about the review portion.
And then you can have another finance meeting if we need to talk about the money.
Yeah. How's that? Everyone?
I, I'm not sure I heard all that clearly, but again, it's the right roadmap, I think, to segregate a performance review from a compensation review. And I haven't, I haven't seen the survey, so I, I'm not, you know, I've heard you all talk about it as if it was a performance investigation, if you will, or, or, or survey. But again, you, you'll have to be very strict about the compensation side of things from the, from the discussion of the review of the performance of the employee.
So question. Page six of the review mentions compensation. And the date on the review for coming back to us is tomorrow, or coming back to trustee find is tomorrow. Can the new packet of this be sent out without, without page six? With instructions to email the trustee find alone, not by what date? Do you still want it by Monday or do you want it, I mean? Because the, the form here says the fourth and then month, and then the email said the seventh. So I'm suggesting if we're gonna follow the roadmap that we're laying out, that we remove the compensation page from the review, set the right date, email it out to everybody, we're all on the same page.
That was done by the fourteenth, trustee include with the past bit.
Well, how much time do you need to tally that? I want to be respectful of that. How much time do you need? Is fourteen gonna be enough?
We'll do it two days, fourteen, seventeen.
Okay.
All right. You take care of the changes and the dates on that. Do you have the original?
Yep.
Perfect. All right. Any alternative business here announcement?
Yes, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, we had an interesting conversation on Facebook yesterday with a resident that posted in the community group about a cat that keeps coming around her house. Right? And she wants to find the owner of the cat. Long story short, it's basically, she has a cat that comes to her house. She wants to do something with this cat because it's not hers and it's not any of her neighbors. We call it animal control. Animal control won't do anything about the cat because we have a, we don't have a no leash law for cats. I don't know how true this is, but we have a running a lot, we have a running at large ordinance for dogs only. And it mentions nothing about cats. And I haven't done a whole lot of research with this. My understanding is, is that animal control won't do it because we don't have anything in there that suggests cats. Chief is raising his hand.
Okay, our ordinance back in the day adopted King County's animal control ordinances. And that ordinance does speak to cats and dogs running at large. So they are something that is worthy of service. But the problem is, they have to be captured. Once they're captured, we have to call them the village, meaning us. Animal control will come out, take care of the animal, scan it, or we'll scan it for a trip. We do have those capabilities. More than likely, the cat's not gonna have it. Animal control thinks it, if the cat is destroyed, we send it to go for three months' time.
So basically, the story that I got is not accurate.
Correct.
Perfect. All right, moving on. Hey, you know, I know.
I, I do have one question for Linda. And this is, I, I probably should have brought it, brought it up during PR, but I wasn't thinking about it as a PR committee thing. Do you have, or can you report to the board, not names, but numbers of packets that have been picked up for the positions going open, or the open positions that'll be happening at the next election? I think as PR, we talked about promoting that we had open positions. I just want to make sure, should we post again? Do we have people that have polled?
Okay, you want to know how many people have picked up or how many?
Yeah, not, not names. How many packets have been picked up? And should we keep promoting it?
I have, on my, on my paper, two people. But mind you, they can pick it up on the website. So technically, I do not have numbers, hard numbers.
Okay, so people could download or they can come in. Two have come in. We don't know how many have downloaded.
Correct.
Trustee Reed, is there a way to pull download numbers for content off our website for anything that people would download?
Yeah, but I don't think it would give us an accurate representation. I mean, we could certainly look and see how many times a file was accessed. That's easy enough to do. But I, I don't know that that's gonna give you a number that you're, that you're looking for. Because as an example, I mean, a person could download it two or three times.
I get that.
So-
Okay.
So then may-
Certainly look, but I, I'm on a-
In your opinion, do we need, does PR need to take on the promotion of that again? Should we post again in social? Do you think we need to advertise it? From your experience, are we looking okay? I mean, what's your opinion?
Well, they have to come back to me anytime after the Fourth of December, so they do have some time. If you want, tomorrow, the fourteenth, the fourteenth, oh. So if you want to go ahead and do it, they may have time to get signatures out. I would say yes, do it again. Okay.
Okay.
Up until the Fourth of December. We got Saudi the fourteenth, we bring it in the beginning, up until the twenty-first. So we got the fourteenth to the twenty-first of December.
Okay.
I would just post it again because the deadline has not hit.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you. I think, okay. That was my only question.
Uh, no, this is, these are my notes about, oh, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I know what it's about. No, no, this is, this is my notes about the vaccine. But the cat was on the top of it. It wasn't.
Any other questions or comments? I read about the cat. I missed the cat.
I started the cat story again. Oh, gosh.
I'm trying to put it down. Oh, my land. It killed a bird and, what was it, an animal?
A rabbit.
A rabbit.
All right, anything else before we adjourn?
I'd just like to say thank you, Jay, for all you've done for us for the past year. It's been a really good year. I know it's just kind of weird talking about, after we just talked about your evaluation. But I think you've done a wonderful job in this year, and I'm looking forward to at least four more with you.
I appreciate that. I, I share your, share your feelings. Thank you very much.
I agree. I agree. It was creepy talking about it, but good job.
I was actually trying to create a little structure, and I think from this chaos will come structure eventually.
We also should acknowledge that tomorrow is Mr. Hedges' birthday.
Oh, wow.
Oh.
Did you hear that? I think you told me.
You just told me before I sat down, otherwise I wouldn't remember.
Happy birthday. All right, anything else? I want to take a motion to adjourn.
So?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Fine?
Aye.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Big Jackie?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Robert?
Aye.